Will the audience please rise? We will now pay tribute to the students who provided our attendance during the period. Will the audience please listen and join us as we speak our national language? Please be seated. At this time, I would like to thank you for participating in this edition of the National Student Association of America's First Congress. Thank you.
Thank you, J. V. Rosario, President of the Washington Canadian School Student Hospital, for leading us in the pledge of allegiance, and thanking to Miles Shire for playing our national anthem so beautifully on piano. I would like to recognize Mr. John Reed, Superintendent of School, Mr. Kenneth Cope, Assistant Superintendent of Personnel, Dr. Dennis Deegan, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Jennifer Beck Giorelli, Ms. Nancy Rowain, Director of English Language Arts, Principal and Assistant Principal, Moderators, Teachers, Family and Friends, and the Thirty-Nine Annual District Spell-ee Participants. On behalf of Central Office, I welcome you all to the Thirty-Nine Annual Bayonne School District Spell-ee. We are honored to have these champion spellers compete this evening. We welcome them to the stage at this time. All thirty-three students have achieved first place in their school-wide spellees, so let's give them a nice round of applause for their outstanding accomplishment. Thank you to Superintendent John Reed and Central Office Administration, Principal George Becker for accommodating us this evening, Director of English Language Arts, Ms. Nancy Rowain for her guidance, and Director Tim Craig, President of the Bayonne Public School Administrators Association, for generously donating monetary prizes on behalf of the administrators. A special thanks to the moderators who helped prepare their champions for tonight's competition. Please stand to help the applauding. At this time, I would like to introduce tonight's spell-ee staff for generously volunteering their time this evening. Dr. Bransfield will serve as our pronouncer, Mr. McHafferty will serve as tonight's official judge, Ms. Tumey will serve as tonight's recording secretary, Mrs. Wiggly serves as our student coordinator, and Miss Lizzie Hastings is videotaping this evening's competition so we may enjoy it on back to you. I will now read the official contest rules. In competition, after the pronouncer gives the contestant a word, the contestant must also pronounce the word before spelling it. The contestant may request the pronouncer to re-promise the word, divine it for using in a sentence. The pronouncer shall grant the request until the judges agree that the word has been made reasonably clear to the contestant. Judges may disqualify any contestant who ignores a request to start spelling. Having started to spell a word, the contestant may stop or start over, retracing the spelling from the beginning, but if retracing, there can be no change of letters of their sequence when those first pronounced. If letters of their sequence are changed in the respelling, the speller will be disqualified. Upon missing the spelling of a word, the contestant immediately drops out of the contest. The next word on the pronouncer's list is given to the next contestant. When the contestants are reduced to two, the elimination procedure changes. At that point, one contestant misspells a word, the other contestant shall be given an opportunity to spell that same word. If the second contestant spells that word correctly, plus the next word on the pronouncer's list, then the second contestant shall be declared the champion. If one of the last misspellers misses and the other, after correcting the error, misspells the new word, submitted to him or her, then the misspelled new word shall be referred to the first spell. If the first speller, that succeeds in correcting the error and correctly spells the next word on the pronouncer's list, then he or she shall be declared the champion. If both spellers misspell the same word, both shall continue in the contest, and the one who first misspells the word shall be given a new word to spell. The judges are in complete control of the spell-ee. Their decisions shall be final on all questions. Dr. Bransfield, you may now be done.
Thank you, Dr. Speller. For speller number one, please come to the microphone. Smell.
S, M, S, and E, L, L, smell.
This word has a homonym, or could be confused with another word. The word is party. It is a noun. It means a social gathering or assembly of persons for entertainment, amusement, or pleasure. Party.
Party. We may want to do what?
This word has a homonym, or could be confused with another word. The word is few. It is a plural noun, and it means not many persons or things. Few.
Few. F, E, W, few.
This word has a homonym, or could be confused with another word. The word is fart. It is a verb. It means admitted, or uttered, in characteristic, short, loud, explosive cry of a doll. Fart.
Fart. We may want to do what?
Just a couple of minutes. Cross.
Cross. C, R, O, P, S, cross.
Shell.
Shell.
This word has a homonym, or could be confused with another word. The word is pail. It is a noun. It means a vessel for catching, holding, or carrying liquids or salts. Pail.
Pail. We may want to do what?
This word has a homonym, or could be confused with another word. The word is scars. It is a plural noun. It means marks left in the skin or an internal organ by new connective tissue that replaces tissue injured, as by a burn, ulcer, or incision. Scars.
Scars. S, C, A, R, S, scar.
Trash.
Trash. T, R, I, N, F, D, trash.
Chores. Chores. Porch.
Porch. P, O, R, P, H, porch.
This word has a homonym, or could be confused with another word. The word is speck. It is a noun. It means a tiny bit of something, a small piece, particle, or amount. Speck.
Speck. S, Q, I, N, C, K, S, speck.
Phone.
Can you make a phone?
To call a person using a device for reproducing sounds, especially articulate speech, at a distance.
So, can you make a phone?
Table.
Table. T, T, A, B, L, E, table.
Bar.
Bar. B, O, B, B, E, bar.
This word has a homonym, or could be confused with another word. The word is files. It is a plural noun, and it means collections of related data records, as for computer. Files. Only. Alone, in, identified, or implied category. Thank you. Clash.
Fight. C, E, W, F, L, E, S, fight.
Forget. Swoon. Greeting. A formal gesture of welcome or traditional.
Hello.
Bandmates.
Bandits.
You can carry the band, elevate the team, as bandits. Funky.
Funky. F, U, N, K, Y, funky.
Rare.
Rare. R, A, S, R, rare.
Blessings.
Blessings. B, L, E, S, S, I, L, G, S, blessings.
Growling.
Can you make a phone?
Making a low, heavy, golden sound. Grownling.
Growling. G, R, O, W, L, I, G, growl.
Sweat.
Sweat. S, T, O, V, E, P, T, sweat.
Fudge.
Fudge. F, U, N, K, Y, fudge.
Passing.
Passing.
F, A, S, T, I, N, G, passing. Everyone.
Everyone. E, V, E, R, Y, O, N, G, everyone.
Frantic.
Frantic. F, R, A, S, R, Y, F, R, Y.
Heaven.
Heaven. H, E, A, U, Y, heaven.
Easily.
Easily. E, A, S, I, L, L, easily.
Aloud.
Aloud. T, L, 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 N, L, U, U.
This word has a homonym, or could be confused with another word. The word is nimble. It is an adjective. It means more by quick, plain movement. Agile. Nibble.
Nimble. N, I, N, B, L, E, nimble.
Snoopy. Honily or arrogantly contemptuous. Snobbish.
Considerable.
Snoopy.
Snoopy. S, M, O, O, T, L, T.
Spello.
Spello. S, T, O, V, S, P, L, S, P, L.
This word has a homonym, or could be confused with another word. The word is beginning. It is a verb that means performing or executing the first part of an action, activity, or procedure. Starting. Beginning.
Beginning. B, E, G, I, N, I, N, G. Beginning.
Whiz.
Whiz. W, H, I, C, C, T, T, whiz.
This word has a homonym, or could be confused with another word. The word is hauling. It is a verb. It means transporting from one place to another in a vehicle. Hauling.
Hauling. H, A, U, R, I, N, G, hauling.
Traditional. Adorable.
Adorable. A, D, L, R, A, D, L, adorable.
Constant.
Constant. C, O, N, S, T, A, N, T, constant.
Nealing. Nealing.
Nealing. K, N, T, I, N, G, K, N, T, L, I, N, G, nealing.
This word has a homonym, or could be confused with another word. The word is bruise. It is a noun. It means injury, especially one produced by a blow or collision that does not break the surface it injures. Bruise.
Bruise. B, R, U, I, S, T, bruise.
Doggies.
Doggies. D, O, K, E, Y, S, doggies.
Spitting spam.
Spitting spam. S, T, I, N, G, A, D, S, T, A, N, G, spitting spam.
Pygmy.
Pygmy.
A large, conservative snake. As a boa or ant on the...
Pygmy. P, Y, T, T, O, N, Pygmy.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. T. L. And. Uh. Uh. Long. Long. Uh. That. Is. Long.
This word has a homonym or could be confused with another word. The word is squished. It is a verb. It means contorted as a face, as a signal, or as an involuntary sign, as a thing. Squish.
Squish. S. Q. I. N. C. T. H. T. Squish.
Torment.
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 Torment. T. O. R. And. T. Torment.
O.S.T.
O.S.T. A. R. R. D. S. T. D. S.
This word has a homonym or could be confused with another word. The word is wrestle. It is a verb. It means to contend by grappling with, or striving to trip or throw down an opponent. Wrestle. Wrestle. R. U. R. D. S. T. L. D. Wrestle. Evasive.
Evasive. E.B. A. D. E.
Rituals.
R. I. N.
This word has a homonym or could be confused with another word. The word is ceiling. It is a noun. It means the overhead inside line of a room. Ceiling.
Ceiling. B.E. I. L. I. N. Floor.
Innocent. Free from legal guilt or fault.
Innocent. I. N. N. O. C. N. T.
Overtly.
Overtly. How do you get that?
Publicly, openly, manifestly.
You do it.
Overtly.
Overtly. O. V. E. R. T. L. Y. Overtly.
Economy.
Economy. Means. Of. Value.
Economy.
Economy. Means. Of.
Reservation. Reservation. R. E. S. E. R. E. A. T. I. O. N. Reservation. Temperature.
Temperature. T. E. N. T. D. R. A. T. U. R. E. Temperature.
This word has a homonym or could be confused with another word. The word is peevish. It's an adjective. It means more by ill temper as actions or words. Peevish.
Peevish. Uh. Uh. Peevish.
Chicago. Chicago. C. A. I. C. A. D. O. Chicago. Spellers, we have reached the portion of the competition where we are moving into a different section of the list. The words leading up to now were studied as part of the school spelling bee study list. The source for the remaining rounds will be Marion Webster Unbridged. Although the next section of words might sound less difficult, you have not had the opportunity to study this list of words prior to today's competition. Stache.
Stache. S. T. I. S. H. T. D. Stache.
Sucking.
Sucking.
Submerged, especially lying at the bottom of a body of water.
Submerged. S. T. N. T. N. T. Submerged. Good night.
Dull. Dull. D. U. B. D. D. Dull. Haunted.
Haunted. T. O. R. N. T.
This word has a homonym or could be confused with another word. The word is fuses. It is a verb. It means becomes integrated, unites, or merges. Fuses.
Oh. Can you use me for something?
A modest copy fuses her passion for technology with her dedication to community service.
Agent. A. D. R. S. I. Agent. Quota bait. Quota bait. C. L. I. C. K. B. A. I. T. Quota bait.
Dislodge.
Dislodge. D. I. S. L. O. B. D. D. Dislodge.
Tempo.
Tempo. T. E. N. T. L. Tempo.
Panther. Panther. Miguel managed to snap a picture of a panther on his photo safari opinion. Unsettling. Unsettling. U. N. S. T. T. L. I. N. T. Unsettling. Splendid.
Splendid. S. T. L. E. N. D. I. Splendid.
Threat bear. Threat bear. After four seasons, the show's plotlines were getting a little threadbare and repetitive. Having lost its freshness or loom, lacking in novelty or interest, trite, happening.
Threat bear. T. E. R. E. A. T. E. A. R. E. Threat bear.
Fancy.
Could you use the word please? Fancy. Fancy. F.A. N. F. I. C. Fancy.
Unseemly.
Can I give it a little?
Not according with the established standards of good form or taste. Indecent.
Indecent. U. N. S. T. E. N. L. R. N.
Membrane.
Membrane. N. T. R. D. R. I. N. T.
Impression. Impression. And especially mark influence or effect on feelings, sense, or mind. Impression.
I. N. R. E. S. I. N. Impression.
Noticeably.
Noticeably. A. R. T. I. C. T. D. L. I.
Affirm.
Affirm. Uh. Can you use the?
To validate, to confirm.
Confirm. A. F. S. I. R. N. T. Confirm.
Smoothed.
Smoothed. S. L. E. D. T. H. I. N. T. Smoothed.
Engagement.
Engagement. E. N. T. A. T. E. N. T. D.
Extractive.
Extractive. E. X. T. R. A. T. T. D. D. Extractive.
Irresponsible.
Irresponsible. I. 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 U. N. T. L. N. At. I. L. N. Terminal.
This word has a homonym or could be confused with another word. The word is descent. It is a noun. It means an inclination downward and inclined or sloping surface. Descent.
Can you give me, um, the, can you give a reference?
The roller coaster picked up incredible speed on the descent. Then it slowed as it rounded the bend.
Descent. D. E. D. E. N. T. Descent.
Clarifying.
Clarify. C. L. A. R. I. N. T. Y. Clarify.
Tremendous.
Tremendous. T. R. E. N. I'm sorry. E. N. Tremendous. T. R. E. N. T. N. T. O. U. S. Tremendous.
Sermon.
Can you say that again?
A religious discourse delivered in public, usually by a member of the clergy as a part of a worship service.
Can you use it? Can you say it for us?
While a family minister's sermon, unusually long, but also reveling and inspiring.
Sermon. S. I. R. N. T. N. Sermon.
Instill.
Instill.
Embracing or introducing gradually, calls to be taken in little by little.
Instill. I. N. S. T. I. L. L. T. Instill.
Be used.
Be used. B. E. N. U. S. T. N. T. D. L. I. N. T.
Neutrality. Neutrality. A condition of being uninvolved in contests or controversies between others, or refraining from taking part on either side of such contests or controversies.
Intelligent. N. T. R. L. R. L. R. L. R. L. Intelligent.
Refinish.
Refinish. R. E. P. L. E. N. I. S. H. Refinish.
Enterprising. Characterized by a whole theory energetic spirit, or by independence or rationality of thought. Energetic. Desperate. Bobby describes his three-year-old daughter as a desperate who rules the household with a tiny iron fist. Desperate. This word has a homonym or could be confused with another word. The word is bruise. It is a noun. It means a strategy or trick usually intended to deceive. Bruise. Little did Perry know that this bragging was all to his own good. Mediation. Contemporary. Contemporary. Now Pete's favorite gallery is filled with contemporary art and features local artists. SpongeBob. swashbuckler impassive impassive I A E A S I F A T R This word has a homonym or could be confused with another word. The word is immersion. It is a noun. It means instruction based on extensive exposure to surroundings or conditions that are native or pertinent to the objects of study, especially foreign language instruction in which only the language being taught is used. Immersion immersion I F E R I O M amenities Could you repeat the word please? amenities Um, could you, could you give a question please? Things that are conducive to physical or material comfort or convenience, or to a pleasant and agreeable life. Um, could you repeat the word, if you could? Amenities amenities A M E N N I D I T S amenities prevalent Could I give you the definition? Generally or widely accepted, current practice or favor widespread. Could you repeat the word please? Prevalent prevalent P R V E L E N T prevalent reputed repugnant a repugnant no held in esteem and especially high esteem has its employee at one of the most reputed law firms in the state. Repugnant R E direct direct exponential exponential approximately expressible by an equation in which a symbol written above and to the right of a symbol, expression for a quantity, indicates a mathematical operation to be performed. Can you repeat the word? Exponential exponential yes exponential E X T E N E N T I L L apparent A P E N T supplant to take the place of, to out from a position and serve as a substitute, or especially by reason of superior excellence or power. supplant supplant S solidarity solidarity As president, Adam Dowd to bring solidarity to the chess club. Solidarity S O L I D A R I T R militia militia yes, they have that condition. Part of the organized armed forces of a country whose members live at home, carry on their usual locations, and accept occasional calls for drills or instructions are answerable to call only in emergency. militia N A C sorry, sorry. Yes, militia. N A C A L I T militia reconvene can I repeat the condition please? To assemble once more in a meeting. Can you repeat that sentence please? July had announced that the club would reconvene after break. Reconvene R E C O N T I supportive supportive E R E O R E supportive intermittent intermittent I A T E R O I T T E N T agility This word has a homonym or could be confused with another word. The word is contentious. It is an adjective that means refined, and often perverse and wearisome tendency to quarrels and disputes. Contentious contentious C C yes C O N T E I O M creative creative R E N obtrusive The product placement in the show was so obtrusive that it made it hard for Joseph to even watch. Undeservedly or unattractive noticeable or showing. Obtrusive implosion implosion I A C U R S I O M abstaining 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 It is a verb. Sarah is such an apple lover that she chooses to abstain from eating meat. Abstain O A S A R I painful of relating to a poem. Painful circumstantial circumstantial C R R C U N S T A N T I A L circumstantial insinuation insinuation stealthy or indirect hinting or suggestion. Miochi resented her mother's insinuation that she didn't help enough around the house. microbes microbes M I P R O T T S orbital The charts show the orbital ocean of the moon as well as its lunar phases. orbital articulated articulated R extreme extreme E X T R E I N I O U S This word has a homonym or could be confused with another word. The word is concede. It is a verb that means to admit or to acknowledge. Concede dolorous dolorous M A Horace Code According to Benham's Horace Code, today is a wonderful day to compete in a spelling bee. antigen antigen A N T hewn New shoots began to sprout from the hewn stump in the front yard. Fell, cut, or shaped by cutting with bar or rock tools of a heavy instrument as an axe. hewn retribution retribution I T S U I R T I O reticent The law had to take most of the talking for a more reticent twin. Inclined to be silent or uncommunicative. reticent 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 I T This word has a homonym or could be confused with This word has a homonym or could be confused with another word. The word is juror. It is a noun that means a person designated or someone to serve on a campus, sworn to give a verdict upon some matters submitted to them. Juror juror
Good evening, and congratulations to our winners this evening. I'd like to give you congratulations to Superintendent East, Chief Executive Director of the Central Office. Superintendent East always finds time to attend annual competitions and school events. However, the meeting this evening wishes to extend congratulations to the students and their parents. He very proudly efforts to promote by the coaches and the students. Of course, I would like to thank our old school principal, George Baker, assistant principal, and Mr. Martin for the hospitality. assistant principal, Lisa Lotte-Booski for the hospitality. Principal Becker always provides a loving environment for contestants. And special thanks to the music and art teachers and well-known editorial staff. And in order to this time, I will add to our principal and curriculum directors, especially in terms of ratings, please stand and be recognized. Thank you to our straight team of Bayonne Order stations, which reports our students. And this is the first of many academic competitions that take place throughout the year. The spelling bee not only provides a valuable educational experience for your child, but it also allows them to engage in the helping competition. I would like to thank the coaches for their dedication to students and the trying to coordinate through our coaches, please stand and be recognized. I see you around here. I hope to thank you very much. And of course, to our parents and students, thank you for coming out this evening and appreciating your time that you made to this academic competition. And this is all having done without the support of our new spelling bee moderator, that's Dr. Lisa Costello. And Diane Costello, we thank you. And here is the award to present to you your certificate on behalf of the members of the Board of Education, the Central Office Administration, congratulations and praise to our extended doctor, Lisa Costello, elementary spelling bee advisor. So thank you very much, Diane Costello. So we're going to take a quick picture, but we're going to ask anybody to stay. If your principals are here, we're going to bring these beautiful people down. We'll have a backdrop and you can take some pictures with your families. Thank you very much.
Hey, we're going to announce the winner. So if you're a winner, come up to the front and go to the rolling stone for a nice picture. Our third place winner is Danielle Michael Nealanado. And he's from Rome School. And the moderator is Ms. Torres. So come on up for your certificate and your medal. Oh, I guess it's been a while since we've seen each other. It's been a little while since we've talked. I have his name as... Our second place winner is Hannah Gonzalez from Nicholas Arasco School. Moderator is Mr. Clancy and principal is Mr. Costello. Go on over for a picture, congratulations. And congratulations to our first place winner, Diana Jeanine from Washington Community School. And she's here with her moderator, Ms. Hannah. Congratulations.